Good evening. Welcome, everybody. This is October 6th, Newburgh City Council meeting. I call this meeting in order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councillor McBride?
Here.
Councillor Wheatley?
Here.
Councillor Jarnell-Holloman?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Councillor Turgerson is not yet here. Councillor Carmen?
Here.
And Councillor Kilburg is absent.
I'm going to guess that the new PA system is in because it sure sounds different today. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Well, it's our favorite time in the meeting. Time for the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councillors. And this is the events that took place in September of 2025. Community engagement. September was jam-packed with outreach and engagement. National Preparedness Month was rolling, so we shared a lot of emergency preparations, encouraged folks to sign up for Everbridge for Alerts, which, as you know, we use when there's a fire or when there's other problems happening in the city. Also, we pushed out some signage to the library during its temporary closure, shared the information on the website to increase awareness. Supported recycling efforts by sharing some new resources from Recycle On. Worked with the City Recorder's team to get the word out about the volunteer committee recruitments, which are currently ongoing. And there is, in fact, a slate of new candidates that comes before you this evening. In the social media realm, lots of engagement, lots of posts, and lots of people happy about Operation Curb Appeal, and so we've got some pictures about that. And as you know, in line with council goals, we've been focusing in the second half of the summer on making downtown more attractive and safer. And me and a couple of the blokes have been changing out some of the signs that were all rotted and delaminated. And we also got all of those darned grates to lie flat, which took a lot of grinding and cleaning. We also painted all the barrels, the new barrels. Now, thank you very much, the GFU Serve Day Ladies Volleyball Team. I was able to get them to paint within the lines. And so the decision to not paint over the barrel stays, I think you would agree, was the right attractive decision. Community development. The West Branch Apartments at Hayes Springbrook may begin soon. Encore 77 Tap House has now opened at Crestview Crossing, one of many new restaurants and eateries opening around town. Work has started on a new pickleball courts. The updated noise ordinance was adopted. And, as requested by council, key performance indicator reports are being developed by Planning and Building Division to show you guys how much quicker the turnaround times are. So that is coming soon. Library events. The library was closed September 2 to 6. Tons of work was happening on the front steps and the ramp. While closed, library staff leaned in hard, completing indoor work, painting, moving shelves, books, collection integrity, fixing problems with the database, weeding, cleaning, new carpet was installed, and many other brilliant things took place. And here is my hard-working library team at it. And here is the ramp. The front entrance will be open very soon, as soon as we get that handrail aligned correctly under ADA law. Root. More from library land. We also started this program for the fall called Read to the Dogs. That is where, if you have a little kid who's too shy or nervous about reading, maybe struggling a little bit, like my daughter did, actually, then you have a safe creature that you can read to, and it helps them practice in a nonjudgmental atmosphere, and it's really nice. Had a great author talk, and we had the last Republican governor, Atea, was covered both in the library and at City Club, and about the reforms which took place at that time, land use reforms and so on. Mini Bookmaking Party also occurred. And here is that nonjudgmental pooch. NDPD happenings. We celebrated the Air Force birthday with cake, and Officer Dickerson, an Air Force veteran, enjoyed that tremendously. K-9 officers were putting training hours in with their partners with Tango at Ike, and a huge congrats is due to Officer Rapé, who is now an official Oregon Police K-9 Association Patrol Dog Trainer. That takes a ton of experience. It takes a probationary period. It also takes being supported by your peers. So very much woo-hoo for that. And Ike and Tango, they're good boys. Now, I'm starting to see a pattern emerging at the Police Department with competitiveness over service cakes. Who has the finest service cake? Now, this is remarkable. Horpul Link, who allowed these words to be put on this screen, completed his first Ironman event in the 60 to 64 category, including all of those physical challenges, and he finished with time to spare. And he's training for next year. The officers also attended the annual Night to Shine event. Night to Shine is an event celebrating the worth and value of folks who have special needs. It enables churches to host a prom-like event, reaching those people in our community so they can understand how much they are needed and respected. There we go. Finance happenings. Finance team is working on a new purchasing card policy, still in draft form. Court is beginning the process to interface more with the DMV to start sending electronic convictions that way, rather than paper, more efficient. Finance is prepping for the oncoming audit that is happening this month. And Finance and CDD met to discuss OpenGov's capabilities for invoicing certain items, such as TLT payments. So more electronic efficiency is on the way. And as you know, we're now only slightly less than a year away from being paper-free. HR attended the Barn Liberman 25 Annual Labor Seminar, participated in the Robert Half HR Networking Roundtable, and that included both public and private sector attendees, distributed pre-open enrollment benefits to all of the staff, which always happens at this time of year, and developed better plans with some lower prices in our healthcare area. City Recorder Administration, both Dylan and Rachel, attended the annual conference. Fifty-eight boxes and thirty-eight rolled sets of plans were processed, organized, and sent for scanning. We blew past our annual number of records requests with three months left in the year. Trained staff on the updated AV equipment for the Denise Bacon Room. Finalized details for the upcoming Employee Appreciation Event, which just happened, and the upcoming City-County November Dinner. Emergency management. We have coordinated ICS 300 and 400 registrations. All staff who may have to work in the Emergency Operations Center by FEMA rules are supposed to take these trainings. We also have began work on the Genesis Evacuation Platform. We will be coordinating with all these other entities to develop appropriate escape routes, which I very much hope we will never have to use them, but we will have a shared set of terms with all these other agencies for each possible escape route in the event of a chemical spill or an earthquake or something like that. And there was another wave of new trainings on emergency management. Safety orientations for new staff, other safety trainings, citywide CPR AED Narcan, Public Works CPR AED, first aid, bloodborne pathogens. All of these things were happening during September. A few things that happened recently in Operations Waste Water. Treated 60 million gallons. Average daily treated was 1.93. Reuse water, the Glen Golf Course, 11.69, Shaillam Glen, and 0.4 inches of rainfall per air weather station at the wastewater treatment plant. And we always record the rainfall every day, and that will be going into the ongoing work on the Stormwater Master Plan, which will come to council in due course. Here are some more things. Operations Waste Water completed the rebuild of a raw water pump for the reuse system, completed oil changes in the dehydration unit, and that's the thing that dries the stuff that we don't want to talk about. And we also replaced two failed valves in the pump room pictured below with some yucky sludge coming out. Operations Water, more recent things. Completed the annual nitrate sampling to prove that we don't have excessive nitrates in our water, quarterly safety inspections. As you've already heard, completed the last original hypochlorate cell replacement. All of them have now been replaced. And we use hypochlorate on-site so as to not have to use chlorine gas because it's far more dangerous. Repaired the water leak at the reservoir chlorine analyzer. Pumps were replaced, repaired a failed reservoir level transmitter, and that was also connected to our various work on our water system. And here are some pictures of well four, equipment removal and abandonment process. And there is plenty of water in Aquifer. The city of Newburgh is very lucky to have such a great water supply and no issues there. Here is some thermoplastic pavings installed along Howard Street, which, as you know, we just did a new surface treatment this summer as one of our seven road sections that we did, three times more than last year. And here are just some of the many, many maintenance tasks that took place recently. Sweeping, valves exercised, storm pipes cleaned, and many other things. There's an example of a two-inch water meter on Wheeler Sports Centre at GFU being replaced. One-and-a-half-inch meter installation at Kalina. Many fire hydrants have been trimmed back and painted, but they will never be painted in Tennessee Volunteers' Orange. That would be an inappropriate color for this state and this use case. And it might jam up the valve. Here, there is a story there. Here in North Sitka, a six-inch water main break was repaired rapidly. Here is a sewer service lateral on South College being repaired. And that concludes a smashing September report. As you can see, taxpayers' dollars were hard at work, as they always are in Newburgh. Are there any questions?
Couple of questions. The well that was closed down, number four. Are we going to be drilling another well, or did you already, and I forgot about it?
So, good question, Mike. Over time, the well field row of wells is slowly marching in one direction. And when a well becomes very bound up, we have to abandon it after a while and then drill a new one. Yes, we will be drilling another well. We don't need to just right now, but there's a continuous cycle of well abandonment and moving the well and drilling a new one, and that will happen forever.
So on the water, the line that was broken, you showed the replacement. It looked like there was spikes coming out the pipe. What are those for? Is it just so you can grab a hold on it and fit it on there easier or something?
I'm going to pivot to the man who knows these matters better than I.
What that's called is a full-circle repair clamp. The pipe that was broken is actually a cast iron pipe, and when they break, they shear. So it's a crack all the way through it. They put the full-circle repair band on it. It's got a neoprene gasket in the entire inside of that. It's a neoprene gasket. It's stainless steel. It overlaps. And what those are is the tightening bolts on the side to squeeze it shut, and it's a permanent repair. It's structural, and it seals it.
Thank you, Will. And that brings us up to public comments. We have one from Sonda Martin. Welcome. I know you know the procedure. Good to see you.
Hi, I'm Sonda Martin, resident of Newburgh, mayor, city council, city attorney, city manager. I remain concerned about the ethics of the mayor's promotion of the Spark Newburgh program from his position as the mayor. I was dismayed and a little put off during the last city council meeting when the mayor grilled the representative from YCAHC with questions about their program's compliance with the CET Fund's 60-year affordability rule and the 30% of 80% of AMI for housing costs. Mayor Rosacker openly stated he was asking those questions because of the upcoming discussion about another project, i.e. Spark Newburgh. Clearly, he was fishing for information that he could use to further Spark Newburgh's interests, not the city of Newburgh or its residents. He appeared to be trying to find wiggle room that would allow Spark Newburgh to avoid the 60-year affordability rule and the 30% of 80% housing cost restriction. And the big question is why? Is Spark Newburgh looking to eventually turn the housing they build into a profit-driven enterprise? And how much was Spark Newburgh planning to charge its program participants in order to make this financially feasible? I am uncertain how this clear conflict of interest is being allowed to continue. The mayor has now repeatedly recused himself from deliberation in discussion, but only after he's inserted his opinions and promoted the interests of Spark Newburgh. Clearly, he has worked to use his position as Newburgh mayor to influence the rest of the council's decision on this issue. However, conflicts of interest issues aside, I'm also concerned about the contract deliberation portion of that last meeting. It is astounding that Councillors McBride and Kilburg did not want to put any guardrails or constraints on Spark Newburgh, which is a brand-new nonprofit, such as requiring them to meet the 60-year affordability rule or have a succession plan if the organization were to go under or not even get off the ground. Yet other organizations, such as Habitat for Humanity, have such plans. I don't understand why no council member is questioning the fact that if housing-related costs have to stay at 30% of 80% of AMI, or approximately $2,275 a month for a household making $91,000 a year, and Spark Newburgh charges a monthly fee approximately equivalent to this, as it had said, it will make this affordable housing initiative absolutely unaffordable for anyone making less than $91,000 a year, which is somewhere around 50% of the population of Newburgh. Why is the council so blatantly hypocritical when it comes to which problems, projects they are willing to set guardrails for? Like the Peace Trail Project, which would have helped a truly struggling demographic, and which ones they are so willing to give $740,000 with nothing but good faith assurances and a handshake, like Spark Newburgh? And why is the city council not openly address the concerns that members of this community, like myself, and members of the Affordable Housing Commission have raised about the awarding of the funds to Spark Newburgh? Completely ignoring these concerns certainly gives the impression that the council doesn't feel that they should be accountable to the community. I expect better from our city council than the strong appearance of favoritism, classism, and cronyism that is taking shape. I do not have anything personally against the mayor or the other players involved in Spark Newburgh, but as a Newburgh taxpayer and a voter, I don't like the conflict of interest and the wishy-washy applications of restrictions or guardrails to projects that are not favored by the mayor or conservative parties on the council. Objectivity and fairness should not be so easily swept aside. I also do not like affordable housing grant money being used as a way to build wealth for people who are already housed and doing reasonably well financially at the expense of the growing number of Newburgh residents who struggle to have stable housing. They say a rising tide lifts all boats, and we should be elevating those at the bottom whenever possible if we want Newburgh to be a great place to grow for all people. If your most pressing question is, can we get sued for our decision and not, is this program going to help the Newburgh residents who need it the most? Your priorities are way off base. And with that, I leave that. I just wanted to say, the Newburgh Public Library, I have lived here for 21 years now, 24 years, 24 years, and that library just gets more amazing every single year, and I am so glad that the city supports the library program as well as it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay.
And Councillor Turgerson has joined us on Zoom.
Oh.
Continued business. Review draft of the Urban Growth Boundary Expansion. James, I've been waiting to hear from this. I can't wait.
All right, good evening, council. I'm James Thingwell, one of the planners, and tonight we're going to keep talking about the Senate Bill 1537 one-time UGB expansion. And so tonight is really more a discussion about the process for the solicitation and get any feedback or items that you all would like to see as part of that application process. So just taking a look at the council goals again. Goal two, implementing a careful, prudent fiscal policy, and then the continuous goal E, furthering strategic planning and growth with local taxing districts. Staff's recommendation is, again, to move to direct staff to conduct the formal solicitation for the SB 1537 one-time urban growth boundary expansion sites, and then provide any direction on the fees required with the application submitted. So back in August, we discussed the interest from potentially eligible property owners, and council directed staff to prepare the solicitation. And then the bill itself provides some minimum requirements for that solicitation and application process, but also flexibility for the cities to set that process themselves. So the goal for this discussion will be to take a look at what Scott and I have put together after talking a bit with Ben, who is also currently going through the 1537 process, and then make any changes or highlight any other factors that you all would want to see in that process. So as a kind of high-level overview, before selecting the site, the city has to provide public notice, and that would include the intent to select a site, the bases under which the city qualifies. So the development of previous UGB expansions for residential uses over the last 20 years and the percentage of highly rent-burdened population. We still believe that we qualify under both of those. The last UGB expansion for residential uses was in approximately 2026, 2006, 2007. And then it appears that the percentage of highly rent-burdened households is up. When we first started talking about SB 1537 about a year and a half ago, it was just over 25%, and now it's around 28%. So that data is from March of this year, based on 2023 census data. So it is a lagging indicator, but has increased slightly since this conversation first came up a little over a year ago. Yeah, so one of the criteria is that the community demonstrates a need for affordable housing, and one of those metrics is the state publishes the percentage of highly, of high rent and burden population. And when this all, when we started first talking about it based on the previously issued data, Newburgh was at, I believe, 25.7%, so just over the 25% threshold for the bill. And I believe we're now at 28.8%, so a slight increase in that high rent burden. And then that notice will, the deadline has to be 45 days after the notice, and then it's also sent to the county, each special district, and also DLCD. Following the application deadline, the city will review all the submittals for completeness and compliance, and then send any notice to any property owners of a proposed site who weren't a part of the application. We haven't had any possible applications that we talked to yet that have somebody not included, but just in that event, we would have to send notice to those property owners. And then there has to be a public participation process with a public comment period, a meeting of the city's planning commission or city council with public testimony, or an open house, and then it also has to be published on the city's website or a paper of record. And then that also has to include a consultation with any of those special districts and public or private utilities. To highlight kind of two side notes, one, there is the land exchange option, which we came a few months ago with the property in southwest Newburgh, who was looking to DNX, and that could be an option to do a land swap. Again, that land swap would be in lieu of the one-time expansion, and so the city can continue considering both. But once we get to the site selection process for the one-time expansion, we expect that we would put that decision to council at that time, to kind of allow the property owners to make decisions based off what council is deciding to pursue. And then second, the city is not required to select a site even after we submit the notice, and we may reissue the solicitation if there aren't any sites that meet council's goals and that you think would be a good fit. SB 48 passed this year, provided some clarification that those eligibility criteria are vested at the time of notice. So if that happened and you all did not select a site that you think is a good fit, if you chose to reissue the solicitation, we would just reevaluate the city's eligibility at that time. So we had some conversations with the city of Bend, who are currently going through it, and our proposed solicitation process somewhat mirrors their two-step process. So step one being a general solicitation for sites, and so that would be a kind of broad solicitation where the city would be considering multiple applications. We would go through the site selection process with a public comment period. We are proposing a work session or open house where planning commission, public, councillors could kind of go through a more informal review process, and then work session and public hearing at council, where you all would make the decision by resolution to select a site. So that's step one, where we're taking in all the applications and then going through the kind of high-level concept plan review, and then council makes the selection. Step two would be the more of the concept plan refinement with the one selected site. So council would pass a resolution selecting the site. We are recommending that the applicant be required to apply for the comprehensive plan and urban growth boundary amendment within one year of that selection, so kind of having a timeline on getting through the process. Once that resolution is passed, we would move to step two, where staff and engineering and kind of the city is being more focused on that one specific plan, looking at the transportation alignment and open space and commercial uses, and kind of really digging into what that plan will look like. If the site is over 15 acres and does require the concept plan, that would then need to be adopted into the city's comprehensive plan, which we haven't often done for sites like this. So once that concept plan is refined, that would go into the comprehensive plan, and we expect that both the comp plan and UGB amendment process would happen concurrently. And we expect that both the comp plan and U G B amendment process would happen concurrently. That would happen with the new Mac process, the Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission. And that process is they meet quarterly when there are items for them to deliberate on. They would make a decision and then refer that decision back to city council and the M L. Board of Commissioners for either a concurrence or a disagreement. And then once the comprehensive plan is adopted and the U G B amendment is adopted, we would submit to D L C D for approval. So I can stop here for any questions on kind of this possible timeline.
We can't see the date of November. Is that, why November? Why not October?
Yeah, so. We are planning on corresponding with D L C D prior to issuing the solicitation just to confirm that they agree that our. How we are interpreting our eligibility is correct, because we wouldn't, wouldn't want to get through six months in and then have D L C D sell. So actually you don't qualify anymore. So. Once you all determine kind of the pathway that you want to pursue, we'll send that email to D L C D. And ask them to just confirm in writing that we're good to go. And if that's faster, we can always accelerate that solicitation timeline. We just put November there as a buffer depending on how long it takes them to get back to us.
So just for clarity, the phase, the step two phase is the point at which we would consider engineering issues. Such as site elevation, the need for additional lift stations, pump stations and stuff like that. We would do it there.
To, to a certain, I mean, that is up to council and, you know, I think. The bill doesn't, you know, say what has to be submitted. There are kind of very broad guidelines for the concept plan has to involve for housing types, transportation network, open space. The process that Ben used and kind of that Scott and I had talked with their planners is they. Requested the ten thousand foot plans, so kind of proposed elevations and alignments and utilities. And then as part of the application, we might require kind of the. Evidence of service availability and kind of that, that the site could be served, but not the hours of consultants and staff. Then we would have to review for five proposals, kind of having that top level. And once council selects the site, we then spend the staff time digging into that one selected site for those.
That's very clarifying. Thank you.
So you already made your recommendation, which was to move direct to direct staff to conduct a formal solicitation. If there's no further questions, would somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we direct staff to conduct a formal solicitation for Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven, one time U G B expansion sites.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I think they want some discussion about the fees and the direction on that. Is that correct?
What's up, promotion tonight or?
Yes.
Okay.
So then just talk about the, about the fees. So the process would require a comprehensive plan tax amendment and an urban growth boundary amendment. Items which are both established on the current fee sheet for that thirty two hundred and fifty one hundred fees. And then the, the future annexation fee has that established. And so depending on the site size, those are, are the fees that could be collected. And then these don't include the five percent technology fee. So our proposed fee thought for your. Consideration is that the resolution selecting a site would establish a S B fifteen thirty seven fee. That may look similar to that. Three thousand plus five thousand or some amount that you set. Some part of which is applied to the step one selection and some part of which. Is applied to the step two refinements. The step one would be non refundable to do cost recovery for the staff time and kind of deliberation on that site selection process and concept plan refinement. But then if a site doesn't move forward and finish it, they could be refunded some portion of that fee. So that's our kind of thought. Process, but want to bring that to you all to deliberate on.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the table. And the motion is to move to direct staff to conduct a formal solicitation for Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven, one time urban growth boundary expansion site. If any, there is, I'm sure you're all looking at, there's another sentence there. We could add that by amendment if we choose to, or we could vote on this and then talk about that later. Last sentence, providing any direction on fees required with the applicant's submittal. All right, so you know further discussion. Let's vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign, or all opposed, say nay. I didn't hear Jerry, but it sounded like.
Yeah, Jerry, I was gonna ask, um, did you, oh, there you are.
It is, it is unanimous. So shall we talk about the fees that James has suggested that staff would like to charge?
If I may, one more comment is, so the kind of work process that's planning staff would have to do for the comprehensive plan tax amendment and. Urban growth boundary amendment themselves are somewhat straightforward and kind of we have a concept of what that would look like. I think the question mark is really how much kind of work is in that selection process and the S B, S B fifteen thirty seven. So that's where Scott has also discussed that prior to that January. Selection, we can kind of evaluate what the proposed work amount is for that. So I, I don't know if we're looking for a dollar figure for the fee here, but more just the mechanism. That an applicant could expect to. Go, go through.
Can I suggest that perhaps we, we should let the guys do a little bit more work in developing the price a little bit more? Once they've had a chance to look at some of the potential land tracts, because it could be a much, a bigger body of work or it could be very little depending on. Height, elevation, nearest water main, nearest this, nearest that. So.
Mr. Mayor, Community Development Director Siegel is on Zoom as well and he's asking if he can speak.
Scott, good to see you. Please, go ahead and give us your comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I, the only thing I was going to add here is that this. Question about the fee structure, we're, we're not looking for a definitive answer, really just concurrence of. If the approach is acceptable, then of course we would refine this. I think in fairness to the prospective applicants, we just want to make them aware that. You know, this is a different process and that the, the city does have to recover its costs and we're going to apportion that accordingly. Thank you.
All right, if nobody objects. Oh, Mike, go ahead.
So this is just overall, is it a five percent across the board on all, on all the fees that would be charged on this?
That five percent is on all land use, that, that's an already established technology fee for Open Gov and Tracket and that, so that's a existing fee.
Okay, so it's, it's an existing fee, it's not a, it's not an additional five percent on top.
Yeah, so the proposal kind of along with fifteen thirty seven is that instead of just charging the comprehensive plan tax amendment fee, the U G B fee. That there's this kind of combo fee that somebody gets charged, once they get selected, move on to step two, we charge them that fee. And that covers the, the time through the site selection process and then through some of the concept plan refinement. But if, if a site doesn't move all the way to being adopted, they might. Get some refund of that fee depending on where they are in that process. So kind of saying step one has a fee, once you're selected, you pay that fee. And then there's a fee for step two, which is a little bit more fluid based on if they're successful.
Okay, so if, if, when you say technology fee, is it, is it just a processing fee? Is it? I mean, what, why are you using that term? Is it like processing or, or, you know? Look, looking up stuff, you know, type of fee? I mean, why, why that term?
The costs of our software platforms, including our Tyler platform or our Open Gov platform, are hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. So this is a fee that covers this class of land use application. Whether it's for a small item or whether it's for a really large one like this. And that's just to recover the costs of the software running and the fees.
Um, this, my question is regarding the land exchange. When, do we discuss that tonight or is that during the site review and selection?
So because the land exchange is in lieu of this. Our recommendation would be to deliberate that on that when making that site selection process. And so then you're considering, do we want to select site A, B, or C, or do this land exchange? We have been having additional conversations with that applicant and kind of have, kind of worked through that process and timing. So. They aren't, you know, waiting for a decision on that tonight. They're kind of aware that council has to make that either or decision. Yeah.
All right, if there's no more questions, thank you, James, and we'll move on. So we are, the first item under new business is a committee appointments. You have the list in front of you of the appointments that we're, we are suggesting. Uh, let's discuss.
Um, I've reviewed all the names and the, the applications. I have no problem with recommending any of these people to your committees.
I support everyone that's being recommended for committee appointment.
Uh, well, then I move to consent to the mayor's appointments as detailed below. So Joseph Turella to the Budget Commission, Kayla Maverick to the Planning Commission, Ron Sinicky. To the Rate Review Committee, Mary Meyer to the Rate Review Committee, Stephen Hargrove to the Traffic Safety Commission, Natasha. Loop key. To the Traffic Safety Commission and Hunter Anderson to the Traffic Safety Commission.
Second. All right, so moved and seconded to promote everybody on the list to the positions recommended. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you to, oh, oh my gosh, thank you to Rachel and, and all of the staff for. Recruiting hard because I know it's, it's a constant churn and so thanks for all you're doing with it.
I too would like to express thank you for taking the time to do this. I see that we're going to continue to try to get more people to apply for some of these positions. I think that is a, you know, not that these aren't great candidates, I'm sure that they all are, but the more the merrier. So thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to promote these people that are on the list. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. Thank you.
Want to give one note that we are still recruiting for those positions that need to be filled starting in January of this next coming year.
And now the moment we have been waiting for. The city manager's employment contract. Will? What have you got to say?
So I spoke earlier to my honorable legal colleagues and we decided I would do a short preamble. And then any more complex legal questions could be addressed by the experts in the room, including April behind me. So with regard to my contract, you may first of all wonder, well, why did I make the request this early? I simply wanted to make the request not next year, when I would be in the final months of my contract. To make sure that I don't leave myself at jeopardy of possibly being out of work. I need to have continuous work of, of any sort, so as to continue to support my family, especially now that my in-laws are right next door. So that's the why. The contract is designed to take me through to my retirement. And it leaves me with a little bit of wiggle room on the end about what I might do for that last year before I retire. And, and that seems like a really good idea. My hope is I'll still be able to be here and help with the recruitment for the next city manager at that time. And there were, there were other opportunities at that later stage in my career. There is no such thing as a standard city manager contract. They're all over the board. Some have evergreen clauses, some are short, some are longer. This one, the one before you, in my opinion, represents a balanced position between the needs of the city and the needs of the employee. It does contain a raise, however, in light of the savings that I have accrued for the city, which are currently over one million dollars. I feel it to be modest. It keeps me firmly at the bottom of the pay scale of medium sized cities in Oregon, which is where I desire to be. It contains a ten month severance, which is reasonable given my age. I'm now in a, an ever growing cohort of being a little older, when it might be harder to find a job as a city manager somewhere else. So it gives a little bit more protection in that regard. And I wonder if there are any additional questions, perhaps of a legal nature, that my esteemed colleagues could field.
One thing that I would like to point out to the public that might be listening to this. The city council met in an executive session to discuss the terms of the contract. One of the things that we are prohibited from discussing in that is the pay and the benefits that the city manager has. So the first opportunity that any of us on council got to see those numbers was in this packet. And so that's just an interesting tidbit for the public. Maybe we just start on that end of the table and if you want to make any comments, let's just, let's just hear from everybody.
First, I want to say thank you for all you have done as far as serving the city and saving so much money and I've really. I know I'm newer to the council, but I've really appreciated your thoughtful and thorough approach to things. And I think that this is a really great way to maintain that stability for the city and for our community and continue the really good work under good. Leadership and good stewardship that I highly value. So thank you. And I also appreciate the thought process behind why we're doing the contract now. I think it makes really good sense. So given that this is a normal salary range that is in line, maybe at the bottom end of in line with similar sized cities. I don't have any concerns with the salary either, so.
Oh, gosh, well, I have no problem approving this. It's been an honor to be on this council, having you as our employee. You never cease to amaze me. You work tirelessly for the citizens of Newburgh. Newburgh is a better place because of you. Every day we hear about city managers getting. Every day we hear about city managers getting fired, quitting. Several nearby cities are in turmoil, budget deficits, and Newburgh has none of those. We are doing great, and that's thanks to you and all the other employees, this council. I'm honored to serve at this time, mainly because of you. So thank you.
Uh, in regard to your salary, sir. When I first came here, I was under the impression that you gave yourself a pay cut. Is that correct?
During the period when I was serving as the interim city manager, I refused the city manager's salary. So that's, I think that's what you're alluding to. So that first six, seven months, I wasn't paid at that rate. That was to help the city make up for losses that we had received at other times.
Okay, thank you. And then says 80 hours of leave each fiscal year. Are you planning to take any of that leave or are you just gonna? Continue to, because if you're not gonna take it, I don't know why we would put it in here.
Honorable councillor, I hereby pledge to take at least four weeks of leave next year, and that's not counting something else that might come up. I will take at least three weeks to visit the United Kingdom, and I'll take another week to visit some domestic location.
Okay, I have no other comments about the contract. I have plenty of other things to say later about Mr. Worthy and his work, I'll say for later.
Well, um, there's a complete difference in the job that you have done compared to your previous city manager. And I appreciate the hard work that you've done. I appreciate the staff that you've brought around you and the work ethic that you show. But also just the camaraderie that I feel has happened, which we didn't have so much of before. It's like night and day. But I I feel like I can't really vote for this unless we extend your contract another five years. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I I wish you were gonna be around longer. I I appreciate what you're doing and and what you have done for this city.
And are we just talking about questions or are we, are you gonna say something later? Okay. Um, I don't have any questions. And I have lots of words, but I'll hold off like Derek too for now. Other than, I don't love when people, I guess I'm saying this on the record. I don't love when people put themselves at the bottom of a scale for many reasons. So I think over time, maybe consideration for being at the appropriate place in the range from a regional perspective is important beyond the impact to you and the impact for people that come after you and people that are on your team. I don't believe in people and keeping people at the bottom of our range.
So I wonder if anybody on the staff would like to take the opportunity to make comments about this contract. This is your open invitation. And by the way, Will, when you were promising to take vacation, I saw four of them over there taking notes.
First of all, I'm just gonna say I really love working with Will. I think in an HR position, it's extremely important when you have support and knowledge at the at the top. It's really impossible to implement appropriate HR strategies or rules if there isn't support from the top. And Will is an amazing person to work with. And I think he could have a career in HR were he ever to choose that because he's very, very knowledgeable about the processes. So it's never a conflict for me. I've read the entire salary. Naturally, I put the comps together for Will. So I tend to agree with you that I wish, because it's not just a question of salary, it's also total compensation. And we have to fill no in on every HR comp request we make. Does he have a tax-deferred annuity? No. Does he have a cell phone plan? No. Does he have a driving plan? No. Does he have this? No. And so it's, um, it's always a great surprise to my colleagues in other cities that it's very, very basic and humble. So it it is his nature. And I I will enjoy working for him as long as I'm able.
All right, I'll go next. You gotta move. Having been here for a period of time and having worked under 17 city administrators or city managers, I can, uh, in a position from an entry-level laborer to a department head, I can say that out of the 17, and I got to know quite a few of them fairly well and some that I tried not to, to be honest. I can say that there's only two city managers that I would put on the list that were a significant benefit to the community, having been being a resident, being an employee, that I can truthfully say in my own personal opinion that the city is and the community is better off because of them, and Will is one. We work together extremely well. We have camaraderie is is, there's a whole nother word for that. We have fun. Everybody works extremely well together. Will is not afraid to roll up his sleeves, get dirty, get paint on himself, do what needs to be done and and take action. And he's not afraid to stand up for what's right, either for the city or for the employees. So you want my recommendation? Keep him.
It's hard to add to whatever to what's already been said, but I I just want to also say that I appreciate working with Will so much. I've worked for the city for 25 years now, and I have never felt like it was as much of a team as it is now. And that is absolutely coming from the top. So I am delighted that his contract is being renewed. It's been an honor to work with him as first the library director and now the city manager. And I have never met anyone as innovative and a person who thinks outside the box as much as Will does. And I can't wait to see what the next eight years bring.
Yeah, I agree with Corey. There's not a lot I can add that hasn't already been said, but the camaraderie that we have on our team has all been built by Will. I think that's all been set from his tone at the top. And I think as a department head, I feel I feel extremely supported in anything that I need to take action on or anything that I want to pursue. He always supports us and he always will be right there with you and dive in and, hey, what can I do to help with that? Even if it's as simple as going to get the mail or just doing little tasks, he's always on the ground level with you doing that. And I think that's really important from somebody at the top to really dive in on any little task as well. And I agree with the salary thing. We've all told him you should take more money and he doesn't want to. We've all told him he should take more vacation and he doesn't want to. But we have it on record now. He's at least going next year. So I've noted that. So hopefully every year for the next eight years, he's going to take that much time off. Right, Will?
Yes, ma'am.
My comments will be brief because I agree with everything that everyone has said. City's in good hands with Will's leadership. He supports the employees and he's built a good team around him, and we appreciate having him every day.
And I bet. Just to add to this, this is a team that's all just can finish their previews with Will. So we've all just had our difficult conversations or easy conversations or wherever they went, and we still feel this way. We are excited to work with Will. We're trying to make him cry tonight. This is fun. Now, we appreciate working with Will. We enjoy every day. There's innovation, there's ideas. We're ready to go and run and jump and try new things. And we know that he is going to be an ethical example at the top, which is amazing. So we fully support keeping Will around. And I looks like Mr. Siegel is also raising his hand online.
Yeah, thank you. I just I just wanted to be on on record as saying I support what everyone else has said. I'm the newcomer on the executive team, and I couldn't be more pleased with just how high-functioning this organization is. And Will gets 100% of the credit, in my opinion. Thank you.
Is all right, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I I just want to add that in the work that my office does, we get to work with cities all over the state and really all over this this region of the country. And what Will has done over these last four years is extraordinary. It's when council provided the direction to advance the discussions with Mr. Worthy on his contract, we were delighted to do so. We had some discussions after that direction, some productive discussions, because that's what legal does. But but we're really delighted at the, with what's being presented to council today and and moving forward with with Will. He's just really done extraordinary work and very, continue to be impressed with his passion, his love for the city of Newburgh, his selflessness. He just brings so many great qualities that you see exhibited in the city and you see exhibited from from staff. And I just want to echo the 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 positive comments, because they're well-deserved and well-earned.
You realize that could have gone a much different direction, Will. I, uh, I went to the Oregon Mayor's Association Conference this year. And I had some good counsel from some longer-term mayors who have worked through all these things. And what I found out was that when somebody gets elected as mayor, they think that they have all the answers. And invariably, the mayors want to fire the city manager and start over with somebody that's worth a darn. But as a mayor matures and works with the city manager, they begin to find out that that city manager that's sitting in front of them that had their job before they got there just might be the right city manager for the city. And together with the instruction from the city manager, the mayors are the ones that actually become better at what they're doing. And I suppose in the in the in the best circumstances, both of us grow from our relationship. It was last week I was at the League of Cities Conference where I met many staff members from many cities. And somebody made the comment that several cities are looking for city managers right now, and they're absolutely right. There there's at least a half a dozen cities looking for somebody just like the man sitting in front of us today. We have, you've been city manager for nearly five years now, I thought, over four anyway, right?
Four years.
Four years, okay. And the last council, nor this council, wanted to jump in and give you a long-term contract because we've been through a lot of city managers who left, a lot of them with big fat severance pay checks in their pocket. Will, you have earned this long-term contract. Without you, there's no telling exactly where this city would be today. It would not be in as good a place as it is. We wouldn't probably enjoy being councillors under somebody else the way that we do right now. I really feel our city is working well, and you're about 95% of the reason that 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 is the case. You heard from your senior staff, and they're they're all in agreement. Well, I'm, I I couldn't be any happier to give you this long-term contract. And I hope that we continue to work together for a good share of time. So any more discussion?
Are you gonna say something? Okay, I just want to say that when I entered council and was a baby, I knew nothing about being elected. But it was very clear. I remember my first executive session, which I will not disclose, don't worry. But I remember leaving thinking, what the hell am I doing? Like what? This is a dumpster fire. There is no leader in the building. And that progressed for, I think, three previous, three more city managers after that. And it really hamstrung us from being able to get really anything accomplished from a council perspective. But it also was so destructive for staff. And I remember the conversation as council of who could be interim. And there were lots of conversation of, you know, you're a library director. And I remember the conversation really centering on your character. And I really want you to know from me that there is no other person that could have done this. And I know that you know that the people that were with me at that time, specifically Denise, and will never be replaced. But I just, above all of your accomplishments, I want you to know that I really see you as the person that had the character and the ethics, as Rachel said, to develop a team, and the team is a reflection of you. And every person in those chairs are the best department heads that we've had since I've been here. So I'm so proud to work with you. I think also, one last thing I'll say, is it must be a nightmare to work with councillors that all have their own, like, opinions of the way that we should take the city and know nothing of what we're talking about. And so thank you for also keeping us a cohesive unit with very different views on this council. This has been a very enjoyable council to be part of. And I thank also the councillors and mayor for the council that we have had in the last two years and that we've been able to work cohesively all together towards our aligned goals, no matter what our political persuasions is. This is representative of what nonpartisan leadership looks like, and I really believe that that's a reflection of you.
Um, for the staff, I know you're kind of put on the spot and held hostage. So please, all your negative comments that you want to share tonight, call me later. So there are, I'm sure there are things that he can work on.
Will doesn't take enough time off.
Okay, all right. But I wrote down some things here. Will's demonstrated exceptional leadership and operational reform capabilities, transforming city operations over the past three years. His performance has directly contributed to the city's receiving the CIS statewide innovation award 2023 and 2024. Reorganized the city's contract and IGA system, implemented a custom SharePoint installation to ensure follow-ups and compliance, innovated a menu-style RFP process enabling cost-effective procurement for road repair and engineering services, led the successful implementation of Tyler's AP project accounting system, spearheaded procurement system reforms to support transparency and accountability, reformed CIP procurement and engineering contracts at reduced costs, which is important, overhauled accounts payable, courts, emergency management, hiring, and personnel systems. His work reset the city's ethical foundation using the Strive model, led reform of system development charges. I appreciate his collaborative, ethical, and pragmatic leadership style. Despite even sometimes having been impugned by this council in public with no opportunity to respond, you you maintain a clear passion for public service to the city, and I appreciate that. I believe you need a better work-life balance, but I appreciate your service to the city. And again, I think your performance has been exemplary exemplary. And also, I know you couldn't do it all without this amazing staff that you have here. Well, that's why I said that at the end.
Well, I, I have to, I have to leave very soon. So if it's all right with you, I would like to go ahead and call for a, a vote here. a vote here. Would someone like to make a motion, Derek?
A move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-nine ninety-six approving the proposed contract between Mr. Will Worthy and the city of Newburgh for continued employment as the city manager.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-nine ninety-six approving the proposed contract between Mr. Will Worthy and the city of Newburgh for continued employment as city manager. Is there any further discussion? Good. In, in that case, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. I believe it's unanimous, Will. Thank you. You're going to put up with it for a long time. And Elise, I'm going to sign this and if you would take over the meeting, I would appreciate it.
And I'm still up to bat. Let's do more resolutions.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so now we will move along to the city manager review process.
So I requested that the review process be, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I requested that the process be shifted to be the same as that used by the department heads. And based upon academic research, we decided several years ago to do, to move to Professor Lazimby's preview system rather than having a point scored system citywide. So I thought I would intro this a little bit and explain a bit more about how the preview works. We've all just done our previews and it's a little different. So the current review system, despite having given excellent grades to many people, doesn't really do anything to further the goals of the city. The proposed system creates an open space for dialogue on how well council goals are being achieved in the future. And since it's not scripted, you guys can ask me anything that you want to in that process and on any council goal or other subject. It also, the preview process is nested on looking forward in time rather than always necessarily looking backwards. So when I and my senior staff do our previews, we're talking not about the performance that may have occurred in the last few months, but we're talking about how can we do something better in the next year? What process improvements need to be invented? What are we not thinking about? That's what happens when you knock the shackles off of having a dreaded system. And most of the people in this room have been subject to these dreaded systems most of their careers. And I would argue that they don't really do anything to help the organization. By moving the annual process to match the system used by department heads, my efforts will more closely align to the council goals. And I think that will be more effective in identifying any blank spots or things that I should be doing differently. And I wanted to ask if there were any other questions about the preview process.
Anyone have any questions? Thoughts? Counselor Carmen?
A move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-nine ninety-four establishing a process for the city manager's annual review.
Second.
Robin with the second. Any discussion? Counselor Turkerson, do you want to say what's in your head? Looks like you're trying to decide. Okay, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, City Manager Worthy.
They stole me off the bat.
I know. So now we will move on to eight point four, which is city manager succession planning. And I would just like to say that I loved that this was included in your initial contract, but I think it makes more sense to live outside of your contract. So I'm grateful that you're willing to prepare this conversation for us and give us your thoughts.
I think that in every life and in every time, there is a season. And there is a season when it is right to do certain things in your life, just like when you're young and before you have kids, you do certain things. And as you get older, you think about other parts of your life and what you can lean into. And I think all too often in organizations, especially public organizations, the people who are the chief executives, they may sometimes overstay that time. They may fail to look at retirement and think about what's, what's good for their family and also may not be bringing the best for the city. So as I thought about my contract renewal, I wanted to propose a path for the city that will come after my time and propose an option so that I can assist in that transition to make it smooth and flawless and to keep myself honest. To make sure that when it's my time to move on, that I do it gracefully and for what is for the best for Newburgh. So that's where I'm coming from on this thing. And it will keep me involved in the process. I'll be able to help with the future recruitment. We'll be able to find out what kind of person the council needs and wants in the twenty thirty-three, twenty thirty-four era. And I will make sure that I can play some part in helping Newburgh continue to flourish.
Great. Any counselor thoughts, questions for Will? Any concerns? Okay, can I get a motion? Yes.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-nine ninety-five establishing a succession plan for the city manager position.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. All those, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again so much for everything you have done for the city. Okay, we are moving to eight dot five, which is library surveillance policy. I believe that's with Cory. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Cory Burkle, Newburgh Library Director. I'll keep this short and sweet. So if you have any questions, just stop me. We can talk more about something too. You have the surveillance policy in your packet already. So you can see it's pretty straightforward, I think. So I'm just going to go through a few things here. These are a few library stats. We're open forty-two hours a week. We average about eight thousand two hundred library visits with about thirty-two, almost thirty-three thousand circulation events and about two thousand six hundred fifty reference questions a month. We're pretty busy. We see a lot of the public and most of the time that's really great. And we have occasional times where it could be better. We have had surveillance cameras for a few years now, as, as you know. And the surveillance policy is just putting, I think, giving more transparency to this process. So everybody knows what, so we can all be on the same page about a policy. So we did work with Miller Nash. We worked with James going through the policy after our library advisory board approved it. So we've brought, brought it to you with all of those changes as well. I do think that the cameras continue to be successful in discouraging unsafe behaviors at the library. It doesn't take very long if something crops up for us to be able to go to that person directly and say, you know, this is the kind of behavior that is not appropriate at the light, appropriate at the library. We talk about a consequence and we move on from there. So we have cameras that are both outside the library as well as inside the library. And I believe we've got pretty good coverage over the library. When we have problems, the Newburgh Dundee Police Department has been really great to work with. Fortunately, we don't have to call them very often, but when we do, they respond right away. And they've been really great to work with, which I appreciate. And that's really all I've got. Does anyone have any questions about the surveillance policy?
Counselor Carmen?
Thank you. Reading this through the lens of my profession, it seems like there's a barrier here for working with law enforcement with this video. Requiring search warrants sometimes or in response to search warrants or the language says they may release video to the police department.
The experience that I've had has been us calling the police department and then using our video to work with them. So this just puts something in place to, to say, you know, this for the public too. This is something that we use for your safety, but if somebody comes to us, then there's a little bit more we have to go through before we release videos. This hasn't been something that's happened at our library, but at other libraries, we've seen people from the public who are going to the library and asking for them to release video for, you know, different kinds of reasons. So this just helps us give a little bit better process for that.
So then in the middle of the night, if the police need access to video for whatever reasons related to criminal activity, there's not going to be any barriers. Is that what I'm understanding? Like you're gonna, whoever's working will facilitate that. And do we have a similar policy for other cameras in the city?
So we do not have a similar policy for other cameras in the city, but the other areas are much less heavily trafficked than the library with the possible exception of court on court days. But then there are always officers with body worn cameras nearby who are available to either capture footage or to deal with a problem. So that's just why we thought the library had to have a slightly more robust process or why Cory thought that.
And also if, if there's shenanigans going on at the library in the middle of the night, I am the person who gets the phone call and I am the person who goes down there. So absolutely it will be me responding to that in the middle of the night. And if we have, I mean, if there's, if there's some kind of problem at the library, we're always working with the police department to get things figured out too.
Counselor Carmen?
Sorry, but you can, is there any situation in where you're going to make our own Newburgh Dundee Police Department write a search warrant for video?
I, I mean, I certainly haven't had anything come up and I don't know what that situation would be. I mean, the experience that I've had is it's always us going to the police department and saying, hey, we have a problem. Oh, no, I should say recently I did get an email from the, from the police chief too about something that he had noticed that was going on outside the library too. So there is, there is that that happens too. And then we work together on that.
Will?
I cannot imagine any circumstance, given how closely we work together, where that would not be facilitated.
Chief Cosmickey, what do you think?
I can't imagine any instance where we're not working together. Especially under Will and Cory. We have been met with resistance prior to these folks being here. So but since they've taken over, we haven't had any, any issues whatsoever. But I think I understand your concern is not everyone is always going to be here.
I'm sorry to ask this, but would you mind giving kind of like, if you have an example or something in the back of your mind that could be for us non-perfect people? I don't have any of this background. So it might just be a little.
I just see multiple instances. We don't have a lot of crime here that takes place in the city. But when it does happen and it happens around the library, you know, it'd be nice to have immediate access and no roadblocks to obtaining that video. For example, you know, in the city I work in, Triment comes through there and we can get video like that. There is no, because they want to help solve problems and I understand that's what's happening here in the city now and that's great. But my concern, like was mentioned, that can change. You could be gone. Someone else comes in. And then they have this document to lean on or go write a search warrant, which to me doesn't seem to be helpful. That's all.
Counselor Gray?
Yeah, Derek, I, I agree with you. If the rest of the council feels the same way, I would propose that Mary, maybe Counselor Carmen come up with a line or two that he feels would, would work and have that inserted.
Can I suggest we maybe work together on that? If you're willing to do that.
Do you have thoughts?
I'm certainly willing to do that, but I think it's probably more appropriate that it happens between the police department and you.
Okay.
Just for the future, like I said, I understand this is a great working relationship now, but things change.
Okay.
Okay, and James?
Yes, yes, thank, thank you, Council President Yardo Hallam. And I, I think that some language to you know, kind of reaffirm that, that working relationship is, makes sense from a legal perspective, you know, and looking at the, kind of the use of video section within the policy. The, the, the intent certainly is not to create barriers for the, for the police department to access records. You know, that section in particular is anticipating a situation. For example, couldn't anticipate a lot of situations, but for example, you have an incident, the police are called. As a result of that incident, there's some sort of maybe dispute between two individuals who are caught on camera. And let's say there's a claim, a tort claim that comes from one of the lawyers for one of the people. And now they're trying to use that camera footage in a claim that doesn't even involve the city, right? So plaintiff's counsel, we don't necessarily want to just disclose that to plaintiff's counsel, a third-party plaintiff's counsel. We want to operate within the public records law if, if they submit a public records request, but we don't want them to use that as a backdoor around the normal discovery process and third-party claims that don't involve the city. But certainly with respect to the department, I, I, you know, in the city attorney's office, we wouldn't want to get in the way of, of bad access and that relationship with, with the department as well. And so happy to, if, if, if counsel is amenable to it and Cory and chief, I'm happy to propose, you know, maybe a sentence or two, won't take much time at all to kind of reaffirm that, if you will.
Yeah, that sounds good. Perfect. Okay. All right. Does that? Okay, awesome. Well, not to delay, but delay.
No worries at all. This was just me presenting this time anyway. So.
Okay. Well, thank you for all that you do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, last item. We have our amazing city recorder on records policy.
So this policy basically is just bringing together all of the current practice surrounding records at the city, making sure it's very clear. What I have been tasked with since I began at the city two years ago is cleaning up our records, cleaning up all of our data systems, making sure that we can actually find things when we need them or when public records requests come in, making sure we're compliant with retention schedules and we're not keeping things when we shouldn't be keeping them. It's been a major effort. I don't know if you all have the opportunity to hear, but we've, we have had over four hundred and fifty boxes of past date records or things that we have digitized that we have disposed of this last year. So it's a, it's an amazing progress. Now, this is not us hiding things. We have digital collections now. So the idea behind this is we have transparency. We have digital collections that people can go and search on their own time that are open to the public. And we are making those easier to search. I know there've been some comments and complaints in the past that they are hard to navigate. My promise, easy to navigate catalogs are coming as fast as I can work them out. So this records policy is to give us some structure around our digital records, set the expectations for staff on how we're going to manage records in the city and make sure that we have, and um make sure that we have uh we meet our goals. So we want education on what repositories we have and what staff products should work in what place. Um, get all of our Windows drives cleaned out. How many of you have a million digital files and you can't find anything because it's all named by random acronyms or you buried something thirty files deep within someone else's working folder you worked at your organization twenty years ago? So this is a common problem. We are eliminating this problem. Um, I had during my short time with the state, I will tell you that every single folder had an acronym and they all looked like carbon molecules because it was some combination of C H and O and different, it was so confusing. Um, so my goal is to create clarity, ease of access and to make sure that we have organized neat folders and we've made immense progress on this already. Um, so each department is being required to create a drive map, which is basically a plan. Here's, here's the main folders we're going to have. Here's how we're going to organize within them. And here's how we're gonna make sure we clean them out at least once a year. Um, we also have a plan for ongoing maintenance and checks, so we have our yearly records week where we go through and we do cleanouts and we make sure that things are published and we make sure to um train employees on basic records policies across the whole board from, you know, um our our public works across the library and everywhere in between to make sure that everyone understands how records work. Um, we're creating a purge plan for short-term records and then the final records policy that shows, you know, we're how we're going to comply with the state retention schedule. It formally adopts the state retention schedule for cities. Um, and it also uh makes space for exemptions when we need them. So any questions on this?
Can I say a decentralization thing?
Sure.
The critical thing about the drive map part is that the drive maps will not be centrally derived by administration. The drive maps will be designed by the departments to match their best use. It's just that we all have to have one.
Great. Any questions, discussion, comments? Okay. Okay, are we looking for a vote on this one?
We are looking for a vote.
Okay. Alright, can I get a motion? Counselor Carmen?
A move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-nine thirty-three, allowing the city recorder to update and implement the new records policy and data control plan.
A second.
Counselor Wheatley with the second. Okay, um, any discussion?
I'm gonna call out that I made a typo in there and it should be thirty-nine ninety-three, but I miswrote it.
Are you comfortable with uh amendments? Yes. Okay. All those in favors, you know, aye.
Aye.
Hey. Oh, all passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, since I'm acting as mayor right now, I'm gonna take a second to just also in the spirit of Will's contract, just say that um I want to say to my fellow counselors that the world is so polarized right now and I just want to look you all in the eyes and say thank you for all that you are doing as an elected and nonpartisan elected. And I know that we might be on different sides of the partisan aisle at times, but I have huge respect and um admiration for each of you and I want nothing more than no violence in this community. And I feel uncomfortable that it has not been said from these council chambers yet. And um all of the comments on Facebook, I know that it comes from both sides. And so I would like to acknowledge that as well to each of you, that um I will not be participating in any of that and I hope that um each of us will speak up for every person in our community and ensure that there is safety and protections for all people in this community. And that extends especially to people that we disagree with. So thank you for all of, for all that everyone does on this council. Thank you. Get out of here. Go home.